No, so, so this one. It's not gonna look poodle-y at all. But some of her siblings did. It's coming to each other and they're a poodle mom.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for coming and for wearing your masks, I appreciate that. Uh, this is the September twenty eighth meeting of the Town of Canada Eagle Planning Board. Let me introduce the people on the dais. Uh, my far right is Kim Burker, she's uh, excellent role in this for Zoom. Next to Kim is Shauna Blanchett. She is our town planner. Then we have town board, or excuse me, planning board member Amanda Van Laken. Planning board member of the bottom course. Planning board member Gary Hume. Planning board member Ryan Stechek. I'm Chuck, we're the chairman of the board. We also over here conversing on something very important, uh, nice word again, our town engineer. Chris Nadler, our town attorney, as well as our planning board attorney. And more back, we have our reporting secretary, John R. Teller. Let me quickly go through our SOP as far as how we conduct our meetings, we. We go through the application, the order that's presented, if you didn't get an application, or excuse me, if you didn't get a agenda. They're out the, on the table. Uh, we will take each application and ask the applicant to make a presentation. As to what they intend to present to the board, what they're applying for. Uh, the board will then respond with questions and comments. I will then open it up to the public, anyone either here or virtually who would like to uh, address the board regarding the application to do so at that time. I'll then go back to the board, we will then deliberate on the application and we will take action on the application. Uh, we ask if you are here and like to speak, please come to the podium, give us your name and address. And uh, and have your say, if you're out in TV land, uh, please get our attention and uh, we'll recognize you again, give us your name and address and uh, present your, your comments. Okay, first I'd like to uh, make sure everyone knows that the emergency exits are to my right and left. Should an emergency arise, please use those exits. I want to attest that there are two public hearings tonight. And both of those hearings were advertised in the Adeli Messenger on September twenty first. And we'll move on to the privilege report, which is, if anyone in the audience here or there, uh, would like to speak on something that's not, not on the agenda this evening, uh, please come to the podium and uh, make your, make, express your concern. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Take advantage of privilege report. If not, we'll move on to our agenda. Uh, tonight we have first two new public hearings. The first public hearing being Michael Michelle Nowakowski, owns a property at thirty-four thirty-four Middle Cheshire Road. And they're requesting special use permit for a major home occupation. Place a portable ten by sixteen shed or farm stand from April first to October thirty-first. I will now open the hearing, is someone here representing Nowakowski?
Yep.
Are you on?
You might, okay, wait, hold on, okay.
Name and address?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, Michael Nowakowski, thirty-four thirty-four Middle Cheshire Road, Canada Eagle. I'm, basically what you just said, I've currently run a uh, farm stand on Middle Cheshire Road. Um, I'm looking to put a ten by sixteen shed down there to uh, next year carry baked goods. And also to get some of the, and get some of the product that has a tendency of melting down on the stand like uh, peppers, squashes and stuff out of the sun. So we're looking to put something down there to get some more product inside, out of the uh, more shaded area. And then like the more perishable stuff like berries and things like that. Um, we do, I did see in the notes, uh, request of the Ag and Markets um, license, which we do have, which I brought with me tonight if um, if I need to make copies, we can make that happen.
What exactly does the Ag and Markets license?
Um, it says on here that we can cook uh, breads, cookies and pies, and the breads, uh, no fruit, no vegetable breads, so. Um, we can do breads, pies and cookies. And it's a home, it's a home baking license, basically. Yeah.
And this shed's gonna go behind your uh, one wagon you have there, I guess, uh, we have the corn, the bigger wagon?
Yeah, up front, there's a um, there's a uh, greenhouse structure and off the back. If you're looking at the property, off the back left corner of that, it would, I, I would uh, put it off that back left side. And my plan is to move the two current stands that are there back even further, um, just for accessibility reasons and, and it seems every year. I, yeah, there's a good picture of it, so every year I tend to get um, a little busier and, and I would move those two stands that are there back. So the fronts would be in line with the back of that greenhouse, no longer with the front of the greenhouse. And then that would allow for more accessibility as far as, you know, people, customers pulling in and out.
Well, that's one of my personal concerns, please. Your success, well, well founded, you do very well there. Uh, fortunately, uh, or unfortunately, create a lot of traffic and I know it's kind of haphazard how people pull in there, it all depends. Which way one of the cars is parked and the next car comes in, I guess either.
Yep.
Perpetator or pot parallel to it, and now you do have those uh, those tables, uh, portable tables that have the mums and everything on, so that's sort of.
On the left of those tables, there's about, when I moved the stands back, I measured it up tonight and there's gonna be about twenty-five, it's, it's an eighty by sixty-six area. That would be available for, you know, cars to pull in and out, right now it's about, um. It's forty, forty by sixty or something like that, so it's a lot less than, than what it, what it would be down the road, but I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no.
I just, well, before I forgot my thought.
Cars and I, again, that's one of my concerns, I want to open it up to the board as to any questions, concerns they may have on this application.
Okay. I appreciate the business. I would agree with the uh, the, the parking situation, how they park in there, and my plan would also be to um, take marker paint this year and attempt to try to get them to park. And uh, you know, straight lines, yeah, so I, I'm just gonna do it right on the gravel and just, you know, take some white marker paint and, and, you know, with the, with the uh, they sell a unit that allows you to do that, and I would just mark it off the, as clear as I could and attempt to get them to park in a more uniform manner down there. Cause you know, Sundays especially is probably Saturdays and Sundays are the two busiest and, you know, there's times they're pulled in like this and like this and, you know, and it, and if I'm down there, which isn't all the time, I do try to assist with, you know, getting people out of there safely, but fortunately, we've not had an issue, so.
So we put in the uh, as a condition, reduce permit, if you would mark and maintain a uh, line striking there for.
Sure. Yeah, be happy to.
And we, and we take your mind concern.
Okay.
Uh, it was a little confusing then, as to what you were applying for, uh, on my, from a, you know, a, written standpoint as far as the application, the, the original application said you were applying for a special use permit for farm stand.
Okay.
And then it did get modified to a uh, a major home occupation for the use of the, the baking and, and all that, so. Uh, I went back and I, I was sort of, to myself, trying to track the history of the, any approvals that you'd received. And uh, I know on your, on your Facebook site, you said that the stand started in two thousand nine.
Yep.
And I, I, I assume it was under the Ag Law or Ag District provisions that you could obviously set up.
Set up a roadside.
Enough area of ten acres and you were off and running, then you did apply and receive a special use permit for the uh.
Fire one.
Sale card.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yep.
And that's, that's where the trail went full.
Yep.
Um, and then nothing else, and yet, you know, a lot of things occurred out there in terms of the greenhouse and.
Yep.
Uh, some of the things, so I think what I'd like to do tonight is sort of button this thing, so button it up, so we make sure we have on record. Everything that exists there and what you're doing.
Okay.
So that, is that, can I do it, Chris?
Yeah, I think, uh, my guess is, and I haven't talked to Shauna about this, but I think I just figured out why we're here for a home occupation as opposed to a farm stand, but Shauna, do you have some explanation here? I'm assuming.
Yeah, and because he's primarily, I mean, it's a ten, are you planning for?
Just over, yeah, just short of eleven.
And the majority, well, basically everything is, is baked, well, to be baked, raised, grown on property.
Yep.
Um, yeah, we went back and forth and it's kind of conflicting that we do, you know, Chris and I, Chris and I talked about. Yeah, can we do the major home occupation, um, or we just let it go to the edge? Just because of the way it's expanding, we thought it would be best to do the major home occupation.
But so the greenhouse and all that other stuff there, I'm assuming is under the Ag Law.
Absolutely.
They're allowed to build it without coming to play.
You're allowed to sell, if you grow it on site, um, but it's getting to the point where we just want to be sure that.
So, are you, you're baking, I'm assuming in your kitchen?
Yep.
So that's the home occupation, it's the baking, really, not the selling.
But that gives us the opportunity to talk about, you know, everything that's going on.
And the only product, Mike, that you don't grow to any degree on site is the corn?
I'm right, I get that from White's Farms and um, yeah, and I do, I mean, there are some items that are supplemented from time to time, absolutely, like if I run short on, you know, my tomatoes aren't ready in the greenhouse, then, you know, I have a, a, a farm in Canada Eagle that I, I will supplement from, so.
Which is perfectly allowed under the Ag Law at a park station.
Yeah, but the mums, the hanging baskets, the bedding plants in the spring, the cut flowers, um, that's all. Yep, yep.
Cool.
I think it's deceiving a lot just because it's so neat and you have three giant greenhouses.
Yeah, four, but, yeah. Who's counting?
Sort of address your issues, or do you want to?
Yeah, yeah.
Go further.
Well, I, I, I know typically we, we get their special use permit, the, the preparation, we, we pull out the uh, either the regulations regarding special use permits and get, make sure they meet all the standards, or in this case, the major home occupation, or both. And I.
I think it's a minor home occupation, so.
Well.
But it's sort of blended with.
Anything with major that could play us here is that, uh, let's be carried, just the premise of, uh, working. The board must find a major home occupation that's not creating need for more than three additional off-street parking spaces. I know there's more than three there.
Additional. Those already exist and are authorized under the Ag Law.
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking, more maybe the regular issue B would be more applicable than the major home occupation.
No, we, there's no justice special use permit, special use, use permit in our code for something, for one of the things listed.
You have to apply, you have to agree to or meet special use permit requirements, but also adhere to one of the uses that are regulated by that. Which, this is one of the uses.
So, I haven't seen your statement of operations, are you gonna have employees doing any of the baking?
No.
Are you gonna have employees coming to the kitchen to, do you have employees at this farm stand?
Just a part-time employee.
So they're gonna come sort of fetch the pies and take them to the farm stand?
Um, that's possible.
Okay, that's amazing, it is actually a major home occupation, everything else isn't, regulated, regulatable by the town, cause it's.
So we're talking about the, the, the baking of goods and the sale of goods, oh? Or is it just the baking of the goods?
Just the baking, well, the fish, right, because the sale, that's where we're gonna need the waiver, because with the major home occupation, you can't have extra display.
So a special use permit would be for the baking of goods within the home, that's how my description would have to be written tonight in the resolution to go forward. Cause it currently doesn't say that now, I thought they.
But isn't he allowed to sell pies and bread at this farm stand?
That's covered.
That's exactly it, so, right, you kind of saw.
Through Ag and Markets.
So, maybe in part of the residential, it has to reference to Ag and Markets.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good call, Shauna.
If we make it specific to the baking.
We're just trying to work it out.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's why I'm standing here quietly, normally I'm talking, cause I'm a salesman, but I'm gonna let you guys do the talking tonight.
So pies already. So, my description tonight, I'll, I'll modify the description to identify that the application is for the baking of goods. And then I'll add a where, a statement, a clause regarding the Ag and Markets law and the sale of the goods.
Whereas the planning board is aware that there's an existing farm stand, uh, that's currently operating and has been operating for a long time under that near state Ag.
Marked within the findings, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I have some of that in there, but I think the Ag and Markets reference has to be identified in your reservation, I don't.
John will have in a minute, so now we'll have somewhat of a record, like, for this.
Yeah, okay, that's a good.
Cement to the mound.
But the next application is strictly for the baking of the goods. What she's done.
And maybe in the future you'll spend and do a piece of this.
No. No, this is it. All right. I've been warned, my wife's here. Yeah, that's right.
All right, anything else from the board? Uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here or virtual land who would like to ask questions of the board regarding this application? Do you feel we have to get through these, I guess we should.
I think we can at least identify, and if it's a potential.
Yeah.
And your home occupation, I have eight, and then you got A through H. I think, I think as a board, you have to go through that to justify the means of the special use permit, to make sure that there's no issue there.
Yes, please.
And then if there's anything that we want to waive, that would be up to you guys.
I guess the only question I have is when it comes to the, since Ag and Markets governs the baking of the, you mentioned like the bread, cookies, pies. No breads and raisins in them, that shouldn't be allowed anyways, but.
Right.
More, more.
Right.
But, so we, what, what we're approving tonight is that we're not saying that, that's, that he's gonna bake them good or anything, and they're gonna be delicious, or they're gonna be terrible. We're just saying that it's allowed that they can bake it, and that's it. And so like the inspection or any of that goes, falls all onto.
Ag and Markets.
Correct, that's correct, and maybe the Department of Health and, I don't know exactly the.
But, but our code enforcement doesn't have to go and make sure that there's no raisins in the bread.
Right.
That's Ag and Markets.
Yeah, and they do stop, Ag and Markets has been by the stand before, the state nursery comes in and spocks, I mean, I have inspectors at the house, you know, a couple times a year. Dropping paperwork off, paying for permits and.
More than enough oversight, and for them, just want to make sure that's clear.
I mean, he's just.
He showed baking of goods, but it's not the town's responsibility to ensure that, there's another government entity that's.
It, is this, a-also, I just want, just to make sure I'm getting, ultimately, for me, I mean, the baking's important, but if it didn't get approved, that would, it's that shed down there too. I mean, that's, that's in this as well, right?
So the, the shed, that's, I mean, that was the other question I had is, is, is the shed affiliated with an Ag and Markets law that he's allowed to have down there? Or is that part of the, is that, is that part of the special use permit that's being approved tonight?
Well, Ag and Markets would be um, temporary structures and the shed falls under my, of course, interpretation, but.
The shed's not the issue.
Okay, okay.
That's, it's gonna be permitted as a.
I mean, it's shown at the site plan and that's part of the special use permit process for this, so, but, but the actual shed itself is not something.
Okay. I just want to make sure when I tote it down there next year, I don't.
Okay, uh, we had to get through a little bit of house. It's not as bad a secret. The planning board should consider the bond standards on making their determination, the ways the board must find the noise produced by major home occupation not likely to create some potentially significant adverse effects on the neighborhood and the type of noise and times of day, noise of generation, not inconsistent with the primary residential use of the premises. Uh, I think we can feel free to say there's no noise. Pedestrian traffic, more or less finding the major home occupation, not likely to produce more pedestrian traffic to and from the premises than would exist in the case of a residence without a major home occupation. I think we could say this, uh, may have some people off your establishment, but the, I don't think it's anything of any, you know, content much. Uh, we get into vehicular traffic, the board must find that the major home occupation is unlikely to produce significantly more vehicle traffic to and from the premises than would exist in the case of a residence without a major home occupation, and the timing of such traffic is not consistent with primary residential use. Again, I guess we have to temper this, that it isn't Ag use, uh, it's not likely to put the hairdresser in.
Yeah, with the baking of the goods, producing more vehicles than what are coming here.
So he could, I mean, in my understanding, this is sort of, he could be mail ordering these, he could be baking them and shipping them out in the mail. For all it's worth, cause the selling is permitted under, isn't your issue.
That's not our purpose, right.
But, because you do have to, uh, also do a special, a site plan approval in order to grant a special use permit, one of your site plan approval and special use permit conditions can be strike the parking lot.
Okay, speaking of parking, the parking, must find that the major home occupation does not create a need for more than three additional off-street parking spaces. I, I think, uh, in this case, we're willing to waive that requirement or, again, because it is tied hand in glove with the Ag and Marketing. Uh, as long as it is marked and maintained, I think that's, uh, that'll take care of, this is my concern.
Okay.
Uh, lighting, the board must find that the major home occupation does not create light trespass on the adjacent properties. Or public rights away, which be inconsistent with council lighting standards, uh, you have no lighting out there.
No, nope.
And you, your hours of operation, I think, you said in your statement, were win to win?
Kind of, dust to dawn, basically.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and the typical traffic is eight to six, eight to seven, eight in the morning to six at night, seven at night, this time of year it's shorter, obviously, cause it could start quicker and there's no lights down there, so.
Estates, any change in the proposed exterior of the building, the board must find the changes, uh, materially order the characteristic architectural feature of the buildings, let's just say, a window style roof line. Uh, done applying, trash, uh, form a sign to major home occupation that creates additional waste products, I think you've done a very good job of keeping the, the parking lot in the area clean.
Thank you.
Comply with that and hopefully will continue. Exterior display, the board must find the major home occupation is not involve the exterior display of storage of goods, materials, equipment. Well, again, Ag and Market, that's priority over, uh, again, we're looking, we're talking about just the baking, so the baking itself does not have any exterior effect, no.
Okay.
Other than the smell.
Yeah, of, of deliciousness. Yeah.
All right, so those are the parameters upon off-street grants. This one, I put in the record, I did get two emails from your neighbors, and they were certainly encouraged, encouraged him to work to act favorably on this application.
Good, nice.
So, uh, anything else before I close the hearing? I will close the hearing, okay, we'll move on to seeker, I think.
Are we good?
Uh, yes, so, they're about to take some votes.
Thank you, yeah. Uh, okay, do I have, uh, I'll be going to, by the way, we got a seeker, we got a site plan, then a special use.
Correct, so three resolutions. Take two action on the seeker, then your site plan reservation, then your special use. I put them in order, I thought it's a separate.
Are you gonna clean up the preamble?
Yeah, so the first whereas is gonna be changed to reflect the, the baking of goods, the due definition of what was identified tonight. And then on the site plan and the special use permit, it's gonna have some whereas as, as it relates to, um, Ag and Markets.
For the reference to the shed.
Yeah, all that's gonna be. As discussed, I'm in my findings, right?
Yeah, number two, September twenty-fourth.
You just gotta spell it out for me, I'm looking at it.
Okay, do I have a motion on the seeker, like this? The motion, man, did I hear that?
A second.
Why? Any further discussion, it's not all in favor, all first, okay, pass. Okay, that's what we want to, the, uh, you like to do a site plan?
You can do them jointly, cause there's different conditions, right?
Well, that's up to you guys, yes, we typically in the past have been in the same thing, but there is a double decision. I'll do a second.
If all we're doing is the baking of this and out, we need a site plan?
By law, you do, special use permits can't be granted without site plan approval.
Yeah.
And they're not, they're not asking the site plan to be modified, you're asking them to do an actual.
There is, Gary, and it, and, you know, the issue, what if he's putting, you know, industrial furnaces outside the house? The site plan doesn't necessarily show changes, but it shows the absence of changes, which is something that you want to ensure. And then, yeah, the development office always has a piece of paper that can say, no, no, you didn't get approved for industrial furnaces.
So I have motion on the site plan.
No.
I think motion to approve a single stage site plan at EPN two-one-zero-six-nine at Middle Cheshire Road, three-four-two-four. Okay, uh, we made just up, whereas.
Yeah, just up, the first paragraph, during what, especially is the man is for, and then there'll be some additional whereas as early as Ag and Markets law. And what is governing that, of course, the lower proof.
You weigh the condition.
And then you have, before you, there's four conditions, the first one, standard, the section one is the development permit, I don't, I'm assuming, I believe they need a development permit for this, Shauna, do they?
Yeah, because we'll also go out in this part of the party, so I think we should.
Then I, I made note that a separate approval was recorded from building and ground signage, which apparently is, there is not being proposed as part of this, if we've done before. All lighting is to be compliant for the time code, in the case there are eventually any lighting out there, we, in the past referenced that, I don't know if we want to or not, it's just. Added it in, and then the fifth one was, uh, you had asked that the existing gravel area be marked, be striped and marked, um, to identify.
A main thing.
And making, to identify the, the purchases. So there would be five sites.
Hey, Bob made a motion, did I get it? I gave you a question, I, I was the one who need pull, there is no lighting, correct, on here, do we, do we need that permission? Are we, look at him, if there is lighting, he's gonna have to come back and get proof.
Well, except that, this is an Ag and Markets exempt area for a lot of it, so, doesn't hurt to leave it in there.
I mean, we're just, and I don't, the way I interpret it is that we're just identifying that all lighting that is out there, is gotta just go and comply. But, and then that leaves it up to the applicant, but if they would like to comply, then it's already, it's already done, right?
We have to prove in the house.
I think it's more confusing, the more you think about it, I'm with it, I'm with it. Well, I want to make sure the interior lighting is up.
What kind of lights are in your kitchen? Someone's over to you.
You, you guys, you guys talk.
We need, I, I don't think any pull.
I, I don't think.
Okay.
And always gone.
So now you have a total of four sites.
Okay, Bob, Bob made a motion, who?
Nobody made them, no.
I made a motion.
Yeah.
All right, I will second it.
Yeah, we got a second, all right, we got a motion in a second. And further discussion, all in favor. First and best, all right, and, what we're all here for, the special use. Come on, when I, I said? Don't they get begin? Make a motion to. At thirty four thirty four Millet Gentry Road, C N, two one. At zero six nine. Michael Michelle.
And I added the strict parking and maintenance of the grounds, but it'll be a total of five for this one.
That would be something that Chris would look for. Lynn's got a sec, okay, thank you for the discussion. Sorry, we beat the stuff, but we want to vote. All in favor. Thank you, Mike, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to our second public hearing. But this, in the more traditional sense. Uh, this is for Justin Henderson on appropriate fifty one sixty seven overlook lane. Justin, if you're pressing for use forms for major home occupation. For on-site firearms, federal firearms license deal. Okay, uh, I will open the public hearing.
Justin Henderson, fifty one sixty seven overlook. Just a little clarification, I did go through a process with the prior administration zoning individual. At the beginning of twenty twenty when COVID hit. And my ATF individual, so I've actually been licensed for almost two years now, and I've been in business for two years. And I was under the impression that everything I had done is up to code. So, uh, when my yearly exam comes through, because we are audited by the ATF and the FBI on a yearly basis. He reached out to Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson advised him that. I may need a major home occupation because I have customers that come to my house to pick up a fire. So, uh, going through this process, uh, just figured I would give you guys a little bit of information. I am a federally licensed and two state licensed firearms dealer, I specialize in dealing with law enforcement. I'm not a gun shop, I do not have displays, I do not keep firearms out in the open. I use only the most technology advanced digital safes. So, nothing is available to anybody other than myself. There is no individual that has access to any of the safes other than myself. Um, everything is stored behind two dead bolts and a garage door that is video surveillance, so. We take safety extremely seriously, I am a certified. Um, chief range safety officer for the United States Practical Shooting Association, so. Having a kid in my house, uh, my daughter, I do take this extremely seriously, I understand firearms is a very hot button topic. But that's not why I'm here, I'm just here because I was asked to follow through the process and I wanted to make sure. I stay up to code because that's what normal people do.
Uh, board, any questions?
What did you say? prominently deal with this law enforcement, is that going to major clients, is it the public?
I do deal with the public if a transfer is requested, we are federally obligated as being an FFL. That if an individual requests a transfer, we do have to oblige by it if. Uh, we are available, I am a by appointment business only, I. In two years, conducted thirty seven transactions, this is not my primary source of income. This is not even a primary business for me, it's a passion that I've had. I've been a longtime competition shooter. And, you know, it was just the next step for me to be able to serve folks that I work with commonly. Uh, law enforcement is primarily my business point, I do work with them. And usually what it is, is off-duty firearms or when they're getting any supplies that they may need.
Started to answer the second question I had. I just wanna know, one. What to know and maybe others in the public to know, you know, having four or five people every day coming in.
Absolutely not, sir.
What, what's the typical volume, you said thirty seven?
I've done thirty seven transactions in a little over, um, about twenty months. So, maybe, uh, one transaction about every three and a half weeks if we wanna break it down. I do not operate during normal business hours, I, like I said, I'm appointment only, and generally it's on a weekend.
And, and your, your clients are primarily just from personal.
I do not deal with just the general public, I deal with mostly. Absolutely not. I am not an e-commerce site, I am not a drop shipper, I'm not a wholesale dealer, I do not stock from any of the larger manufacturers. We are by order only, so if an individual reaches out to us. First thing we do is we, we verify that individual, I don't just sell, I'm not a runnings, I'm not a dick sporting goods, I have no aspirations to be that. So I do my own personal background, we are, as a business, we have the ability to choose who we work with and who we do not work with, so I'm very subjective.
And why you exist. You know, it's, it's like, if I wanted to get a firearm. And I went online somewhere and said, hey, I wanna go, I wanna buy this rifle or whatever it is.
So you can.
Have to go from someone like you to get it delivered to, to, for me to purchase it, right?
Yes, that is why I am federally and, I am federally and state licensed, so federal requires every single individual. Uh, to obtain a background check, so an FBI background check is run. Uh, New York goes above and beyond that, so we do not, uh, there's other state laws outside of New York, I'm not gonna talk about those. New York has recently implemented that no individual can get a firearm without a proceed from the FBI, which means if you get a delay. Common law is called Brady Law, after seventy two hours, you can transfer a firearm. New York does not allow that, and that is also a dealer discretion, I would not allow that, if we do not get a pass from the FBI, you don't get a firearm from us.
Justin, just go through how a transaction would occur. What, I, I, I know a lot of transactions, as far as physically, it's done in your kitchen, so. How's a person, they contact you? Uh, to, to expand on what Gary, they ask, uh, how does the ultimately come to the transaction?
So we, um, we are in a federal database, anybody that goes to purchase a firearm, whether it's online. Um, they basically put in their zip code and it gives them a pop out of, these are your local FFL licensed dealers. And from there, they would call me, I do not accept firearms shipped to me without prior knowledge. So if you go on Gun Broker and you purchase a firearm and send it to me and don't notify me, I'm sending your firearm back to whoever you purchased it from. I am a residence. If I don't know something's coming and I can't validate it, it's not happening, it's just not how it works in my world. But from there, we would, uh, receive the firearm, we log it in.
So again, the. The third, the person buys it from a third party.
Not necessarily, they can, they can buy it from a third party, or they can buy it from me. So if they come to me and say, I would like a, um, you know, Winchester model, whatever rifle. I would go on to one of my distributors, see if it's available, if it is, I would purchase it. It would come to me, gets logged into my federal book, from there I would reach out to the individual, they have to come to me, and then we perform a background check.
They come to you.
They are only allowed in my kitchen.
So they would pull in your driveway.
Yep.
Park the car, walk in your kitchen. Sit at your kitchen table, and that's when the transaction would occur?
Yep, they would sit down and I put a computer in front of them, we go through, we file a federal background check. I am required to check multiple pieces of identification to ensure it's them. And from there, we go through it, now if it's a handgun, it's a different process because New York State is the superseding authority for handguns. That process is same thing, you purchase it whether it's through me or through a third party. You then have that handgun, I get it, I issue you a certificate that says I have received it, this is the make, model, caliber, serial number. That is given to the town of, uh, Canadega, sorry, the Ontario County Clerk's Office, they issue a coupon. That person is then able to come back to me, we will then run a background check. If they get a proceed, they get issued their firearm and they go home.
You give them their firearm in the kitchen, they go out to the car.
I walk their firearm out to their vehicle with them. All firearms are in my possession until they are off my property.
Well, in their car.
Technically, yes, sir.
Now, do you have any ammunition at all at your home?
We, we're non-stocking.
I mean, other than personal ammunition.
No. We just like firearms, if you wanna order ammunition, it is required to go through an FFL in the state of New York. So it would be sent to me, I would call you, you have twenty four hours to pick it up, or it goes back to the dealer.
So you could get repeat customers.
Could.
They, they, they need more rounds, they call you up and say, hey, what are we another thousand rounds?
Could, absolutely, but it's, uh, you know, in reality, they're gonna go to a runnings, that's a stocking dealer, and they're gonna be able to pick it up there much easier than going through the process with me. Yes.
Okay.
So they go into the kitchen through your garage?
They walk in through my front door, I meet them at their vehicle and walk them into my house.
Is there delivery, like, you mentioned ordering of the goods from a third party and it gets delivered. Is there like a number of packages you could receive, like, are you giving a hundred, hundreds of packages?
No, uh, my average volume is about one or two firearms packages a month.
Right, and those get stored immediately in some.
They come in, they get logged into my federal book, and then they immediately are put in a safe.
Does your federal license limit you, could you do a hundred a day?
I could do as many as I'd like, I don't personally do that, I'm not in that business.
Well, he's got an operation.
No, you can't really say you can only do this many transactions. You can limit parking. You can.
One other thing I do wanna address, there is only one individual that's present at, you know, when we are going through a transaction, we do not stack transactions back to back to back.
No, he had said it's by point.
Right, so the deliveries that you get to the, I'm assuming you have to be present.
I am the only one that's legally allowed to sign for it, it's a. They do not deliver it correct, yeah, so we only work with UPS, I am FedEx as couriers, and it's signature photo verification required.
So you mentioned, uh, two agencies, the ATF, just for the record.
Alcohol, tobacco, and firearms.
And they regulate your license and your business that you're running in this house?
Yes, sir.
And then there's also the FBI, the Federal Bureau of Investigation.
Yes, sir, that's who we are required to do all of our criminal background checks through.
And so, and you mentioned that there's a yearly inspection by these two agencies that come.
Not by the FBI, uh, we are yearly inspected by the ATF, as they are the ones that regulate firearms. Yes, sir.
Year, every single.
They come in every.
I literally just got done with my inspection about a month and a half ago, I passed with flying colors. And it was five and a half hours. They go through every single transaction that goes through my book, every single firearm that is sold, brought in, or. Um, gunsmith, because we, we do all sorts of things, any firearm that comes into my business. Needs to be understood, they have a record on their side of every firearms transaction. And they verify one by one as it comes in the date and as the date that it leaves.
And they did that while they were in your kitchen?
The ATF?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're onsite.
They were onsite in person.
Getting at.
Yep.
Okay, it is a public hearing.
Do you want me to sit down? It doesn't matter.
I'm Roxanne Smith.
Right up here.
Good evening, I'm Roxanne Smith and, um, my address is thirty two oh four Daisy Way. And it's directly behind us. And, um. I was. Honestly quite alarmed when I got this in the mail, having only lived there for two years. Was under the impression that I lived in a residential area and that businesses were not allowed. And so. I guess my. First question is coming in in twenty nineteen, and he said, you said twenty twenty or in business. I didn't hear about that. So how did that happen without us? Being notified, for one thing, and then another question I have is, does this open up our community? Does it set a precedence for other businesses coming in? I think so right now, yeah.
I think, uh, Chris, if you could explain the ma- major home occupation. Provisions regarding what's allowed, what's not allowed in a residential neighborhood, uh, how would you?
A major home, people are allowed to.
Sell guns? I'm sorry.
Uh, people are allowed to conduct business within certain very restrictive parameters. In their homes, for example, some people work in their, in their homes, work from home. Um, some people. Uh, bake pies and send them out in the mail, that would be a minor home occupation. A major home occupation would be where every so often there would be a customer. Limits the signage, the number of parking spaces you can have, it's right in our town code, it's a specially permitted use. Which means that the planning board applies extra scrutiny to it. Uh, if it's, you know, you're obviously not allowed to operate, uh, you know, a full-scale store in, in a residential district. Um, but, but our code does allow for in certain circumstances and with certain limitations. Uh, very limited scope business transactions to occur in residential areas, that's right in our town code.
Okay, so I could have a massage parlor or something coming in.
No, you couldn't have a massage parlor, you could have a massage therapist who.
Okay.
Salon are very common.
Alright, you see, we, we moved here from, um. Outside of. Truantsburg, and we did not live in a residential area. And. We were exposed to a lot more than we really wanted, but we lived there for thirty three years. So I was really hopeful moving into the, where we moved now, that there wouldn't be issues like this, and so. I am relieved to know that, um, ammunition is not kept on site, so there won't be any testing of weaponry or any of that, but. And that's my ignorance, Justin, maybe, shake your head, maybe it is, but. Yeah, but this is, as I said, I don't know, I'm sorry, so I, I just did not understand, and I, I still. I'm not comfortable knowing that that's there, I have grandchildren that come, we moved here to help with our grandkids, so. I'm just giving you my perspective and. And I don't. Like to, to, um, pit myself against neighbor, I don't wanna ever be in that position. With COVID going on now, there are so many restrictions that. Okay, so getting back to my one thought was, why didn't we know about this when he first started? Doing this, why didn't we know?
Well, apparently, I think, uh, Justin had said earlier that, uh, he had gotten federal, uh, approval, he had got state approval for it. Uh, he didn't realize he needed local approval for it, and it wasn't totally after the fact that he had applied for it.
So it's been going on without local approval for two years?
I did go through the process, I reached out to the Canadega zoning office, I spoke with them, and so did my ATF agent. We were given permission and it's documented in that, the ATF does not provide. A license without approval from zoning, I've gone through the process. I've just been asked to go through this formal process, again, I don't know if it was a clerical error, or what it was, it was the prior gentleman, it was not Chris. And I didn't object to it, I said absolutely, if that's what I need to do, I will do it. I did it in good faith because I've been operating a business that I was under the impression I was one hundred percent within regulation for.
So, Mr. Henderson, that's, I guess, he did ask it down.
Emails if you'd like it with the.
Okay.
We're just playing under oath here.
So.
Another thing to, to help this, this, in terms of zoning, this is actually zone P U D.
That's correct.
Not residential.
What's P U D?
P U D is planned urban development.
Plan unit development.
Plan unit development. Um, within planned unit development, um, it allows for, and sometimes you, some might say, a vergence, retail. And other types of, uh. Yeah, within that P U D zoning.
So what, so residential. Um, would be the city of Canadega, would, I mean, would that?
We have, Canadega, the town of Canadega has residential, uh, zoning areas as well, but this particular planned development.
Allows for all of this. Okay.
Right.
So.
They wanted to have a little corner store or something where you can go down and, you know, buy some bread pockets.
Yeah.
You know, it allows, so, so.
So I didn't do my homework, obviously, when we moved here, and I'm sorry to take up your time on this, but as I said, it, it just, it's just something I'm really comfortable with, guns in my neighborhood, so. Even though you're supporting our police, and that's awesome. I'm sorry, even though he's supporting our police, and that's awesome, so.
Just to, just to clear too, though, i- if, if tonight the gentleman wants to receive the special use permit application, it's a permit. So if there were any violations of said permit or issues that were arise, that permit could be taken away. So this isn't like it goes on forever. If there's an issue, that issue can be raised with the town, and the town could then pull that permit away. So.
Yeah, I.
Assuming we get that part tonight, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. You know, it's, it's just a little bit different than like the site plan I go over where you go to check the house and just there forever. This is a permit that's being provided by the town to give them the ability to do a certain thing, there's certain conditions. And assuming they're compliant with those conditions and there's no issues, they'll be able to use and operate that. But if they're ever in violation of those conditions or issues, then it'll come back to this board for approval or deny.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think we have someone in the virtual audience who's likely, that has asked a question, or would like to ask a question. You are recognized, sir.
I live at three-two-zero-seven Daisy Way. It sounds like that this is, in fact, I think Justin said it's not his occupation. It's, it's more of a hobby. But is that, is that a fair characterization?
Yes, that's what he said.
Okay, so what assurances are there that this, I mean, thirty-seven transactions in twenty months doesn't sound like a lot to me? But what assurances are there, other than him just saying so, that it won't exceed that? I mean, is there anything limiting that today?
No, I think you said, Chris.
Well, we're gonna work on that.
Yeah, the, as best as I can answer, that is, the limitations would be, any, if, if were to be approved tonight, the planning board could put certain conditions on there that, that if there was an issue to arise over time, for example, parking of vehicles in the roadway. I, I'm just giving an example. If parking of vehicles were to occur inside roadway as opposed to a driveway, and that became an issue, that issue could be provided back to the town, and the town could hold them in violation of the special use permit, which would trigger him to come back before the board. That is just simply an example. That is not a condition that's opposed. I'm just pointing that out.
So there's not a metric that, that, a, a number that, so I'm just curious.
I'm gonna work on that.
Okay, so. Okay, so at this point, no, there's no assurances that it will become more than just a hobby.
Right, bro. That's what he said, thank you.
Right, if we were, I mean, we regulate things such as, say, a CPA has an office in their home. We're not gonna regulate the number of clients they can see, but we will regulate or at least ask for hours of operation.
Thank you. I just, I was curious what the, the number of transactions had to do with it, and I guess the answer's really nothing.
Well. Are you, is that it? Rest of what he has to say? I think I can solve the problem. I think I can solve this problem.
Did we get a statement of operations?
We did.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
It's very thorough, but Justin, are you willing to, I mean, what's the maximum number of transactions that, that are gonna take place on, in any given month?
As of right now, the amount of business that I'm doing is pretty consistent. I'm not doing this to, to create another revenue stream.
For a month. What, for a month maximum?
I, I, I can't say that because I could get an officer that asks for stuff, or I could get an individual that wants to transfer in for firearms, which is legal, and that's for transactions, so.
Oh, no, I meant customers.
Well, customers is a relative thing. I mean, it's considered ETF transactions is what we.
Okay.
I'm not a volunteer, I'm never going to be a volunteer. It's not what I set up.
The payment only, which, which at this point would identify potentially one person coming to the home to do the transaction, assuming the board has any concerns with that, we could always identify no more than X number of vehicles. I don't know, I'm just putting that out. Yeah.
Would you like me to stand up?
No.
Okay.
Let's try to, let's try to put this, some solutions that are reasonable. Is it, is it, is it re, how, how big is the, looking at the site plan, like, is your driveway a four car?
You can fit thirteen cars in my driveway if you really want it. So I have an absolutely huge driveway.
So is it fair, is it fair to ask that it would be?
Really?
Yes, I have an absolutely huge driveway.
Drive way and not such public road?
I will never use the public road. They are, you park in my property only.
We just add that, can you think?
Absolutely.
Okay, essential. It's a new thing on my way.
To only use the.
No parking street. They're signing.
I don't remember all that.
Yeah.
What's the time duration? What's the, is it an hour between customers?
Five minutes is about the average transaction.
But between customers, you said you never staffed back to back?
I can tell you right now, I've never had a back-to-back customers on a single. This is, like I said, it's something I do as a service because we are required to do transactions. The rest is generally for individuals that I know or law enforcement, you know?
Absolutely. We, I think everybody on the board gets that and, and understands your operation. We're trying to.
I would say.
To put limitations on so that, so that when you get, when you have the opportunity to have one thousand transactions per month, the town has assurances that that's not gonna happen. That's all we're trying to do. We're just trying to put some stuff in writing.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of how to, to give you a criteria for it, but literally I can't because I have never had back-to-back transactions in the day.
Do we say average of once a week, one customer a week?
No, because there's times that I have more than.
You might have.
I mean, I have one week, yeah, two, next, you might be a month before you have anybody else, so.
I wouldn't be comfortable saying two customers a week. If, if we're gonna set a limitation, because I don't wanna potentially get myself in trouble, is what I'm trying to.
Say, say there has to be at least an hour separation between.
There's definitely a separation between.
But if you have six customers one on a Saturday.
No.
But if you do, you know, you don't wanna have to turn them away for that, but standard, say, at least an hour between.
No, no back-to-back customers, that's fair.
That's absolutely fair.
No back-to-back customers. We're going through the major home occupation requirements of the board. We're coming over these conditions if they're, we're going through.
Yeah, I was gonna do that.
I think if you go, that might help you, I think that there's items that you can continue to add, that might help.
All right, let me, let me make the home occupation standards that we use in determining the, training of. Again, noise, the board must be find that the noise produced by the major home occupation is not making significant adverse effect on the adjacent neighborhood, and then any different noise in time of day of noise generation are not consistent with the primary residential use of the premises in the adjacent neighborhood. It's noise and issue. No, no, okay, pedestrian traffic, the board must find the major home occupation is not likely to produce more pedestrian driving to the premises that would exist in the case of a residence without the major home occupation, and that the timing of such traffic is not inconsistent with traffic likely to be generated by the park. Do we feel that there'll be a pedestrian trafficking? No. Behavioral traffic. The board must find the major home occupation is not likely to produce significantly more vehicular traffic to and from the premises than would exist in the case of a residence without a major home occupation, and the timing of such traffic is not inconsistent with the primary primary residential use. I think if we put this, go back to back, that would ensure that there's no vehicular traffic significant.
What were the hours of operation that he identified?
It said no set.
By women only.
So what would be the latest deployment that you would typically entertain?
Three o'clock in the afternoon. On a weekend, maybe on a weekday, there may be an evening that somebody shows up, but.
It might be appropriate to add that, 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 whatever, whatever that timeframe is that works for you for the weekday and then the weekend, it'd be appropriate for the board. That way there is some, you can't get somebody.
Before dark.
Come over.
Before dark is gonna be an absolute, because no, I'm not dealing with any business transactions.
It could be anytime dusk to dawn.
Yeah, well, noon to dawn, or noon to dusk, sorry. I'm not, I'm not doing this in the morning.
Okay.
I have a five-year-old house that doesn't.
You're up early.
Okay, where was I? Parking. The board must find the major home occupation does not create a need for more than three additional parking spaces off-street. In addition, so that's a no, I think. Lighting, the board must find the major home occupation does not create light trespass on the use of properties or property rights away.
There's no, anything else.
Nothing beyond the residential.
Correct.
Aesthetics, any change in the proposed exterior of the building, the board must find the change will be not materially altered and characteristic of the neighborhood, such as patients, you're not doing any renovations.
No, sir.
Your home that related to the use, trash, the board must find the major, does not create additional waste products that are freely contained within the technicals. I don't think there's any trash that's created on or outside the building. Exterior display, the board must find the major home occupation design above the exterior display or sort of goods and materials for the, everything is inside, right? So those are the parameters upon which the board would consider such an application.
And, and just to be fair, right, and consistent, that the ATF and the FBI are regulating the business, right? The town of Canandaqua does not do that.
And the state.
Just like the previous applicant, the Department of Agriculture regulated their business, so there's government agencies that are already insurance, violation laws.
You know, everything that's. It's also regulated by the state of New York, because we have a dealer's license in New York as well.
We're just.
Which is also very valuable, both licenses, I'm assuming, so the
Yes.
the risk of screwing goes up by violating our conditions or the government conditions is pretty significant.
I'm too pretty to go to jail, sir.
So around this, folks, what, what, what conditions do we want to put for Mr. Henderson regarding this operation that's concerned with? Anything? He talked about no back-to-back customers.
If I may, I.
And then noon to dusk.
Yeah, so what I, what I suggested, I, I added a condition that there would be no off-street parking allowed. That's already in the statement of operations, but I thought that would be separate that condition out, so that'd be in both the site plan, especially if. But then I added two more, which was, you would update the statement of operations to reflect that there would be no back-to-back customers. And that the hours of operation would be identified specifically noon to dusk.
Yes.
Those are the ones that I added in based on this conversation. And it was strictly updating the, the statement of operations to reflect some of that, which goes with the special.
And then I guess I would just also say for the development department and John for this, for the site plan and special use permit, staple the statement of operations right to it.
Sure.
In the folder.
Yeah, and Justin, you need to.
I will email to tomorrow.
Okay.
Now, there's more, it's up to you. I just wanted to go over what I had.
Okay, that, anything else?
Yeah, I, I think we ought to modify condition number one of, of the special use permit. It shall remain in effect the current entity that owns it, and I don't think that's true, it's only for him and only him, as long as he has his license.
You can't.
His license goes away.
Well, what are, what are the major home?
I don't think. FFLs are only issues when individual that cannot be transferred.
Yeah.
So especially from a written effect for the current owner, holder premise, and operator with no requirement for renewal provided that the use permit applying the conditions of approval code that it got, it's not transferable.
In general, especially this permit is, okay.
Well, I understand in general, but I think.
But this one really is pretty.
This is a pretty special case, and we can't, we can't do that.
Yep.
Okay. And I don't know if we wanna add, like we added to the other one that said something. We have to, we have to, just to provide and maintain it, Department of Agriculture markets home process of registration. We wanna add the same thing that this order shall maintain a whatever that thing is, it's better word by the law. Like license for firearms. So, I mean, I mean, he has to, he's done by law to do that, yeah, I don't know.
So the town is gonna be followed up with every year on my inspection anyhow.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I mean, law requires you to provide that inspection to the action to the.
We don't have a choice.
It's frowned upon to sell guns out of your kitchen, if you, if you don't have this license.
So, so when they do, those inspections require him to provide that information to the town. That's part of the, the, the federal requirements and state requirements. So you were to get, I mean, I, I'll add any condition you want, I'm just saying, I don't think, I don't think you need it, does it? Right, but we also didn't need that for the prior applicant, and so just to be consistent, I think you were unfair.
Yeah, I think it's something Chris can ask for, if that's right.
So are we asking for certifications of compliance? Need to be provided? No, no, we're not asking for that. We're just asking if an individual.
Tell me what you want.
License. The individual maintains their license.
Maintains the license.
I need the proper.
ATF and New York State firearm dealer license.
An FFL license, which is federal firearms licensee, and then a New York state dealer's license.
Maybe so.
We're gonna lie tonight, that's, okay. All right, any other conditions we want to pose on this? M H O. Okay, I will close the hearing. And we want to taking action, someone ought to, we're gonna take you, someone wanna take care of the secret. Ariel, I'll recommend a secret resolution type two action be adopted for T P N twenty-one zero seven-two fifty-one sixty-seven over the lane.
Motion, second all favorites. Move on to site plan.
Yeah, the, the site plan has seven to be different, and then the special use permit has eight conditions. All the ones that we said out loud are added to both.
I, I guess we need one to wave the professionally prepared.
It's already, it's a, it's a, it's a whereas within the.
Okay.
Those things that say. All right.
Let's, let's, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve a single state site plan for fifty-one sixty-seven over the lane for the major home occupation for Mr. Justin Henderson. Conditions, usually seven conditions that you may.
I think site plan is seven. If you look at number two, it's the site development, I don't think there's a site development. So coming down to a total of six.
All right, subject to the six conditions, do I have a second? Amanda, seconded, my motion, then the second all's favor.
I'll make a motion to approve special use permit approval. Twenty-one dash zero seven-two, special use permit major home occupation for Justin Henderson.
Yeah, motion from, second from, second from five. Around the conditions.
I believe so. I will, I will, I will modify number one, which is the ownership of goods, especially if it's not transferable. And then we added in updates to the statement of operations for hours of operation. No back-to-back customers. We made it, no, no off-street parking permitted, and then we added that. And this is just to maintain the A S L license in the dealership, or the dealer, New York State dealer. And this is just to maintain the ASL license of the dealership, or the dealer, New York State dealer.
And conditions turning on.
May I say one last thing? For anybody that's on the call or, you know, my neighbors. Uh, if anybody actually has any questions about firearms process, because I know it is still, you know, very hot right now. Please make an appointment, come on over, and I'd love to sit down with anybody. Same with the board, if anybody ever wants more information about the process, my door is always open for conversation. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Just please know that as a condition, the statement of operations is gonna.
I'm gonna have that to Sean in the morning.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're all public hearings, we're on the new site plans. First one being, uh. And that's the associate.
Good luck. Thank you, sir.
So it's playing center property forty-three fifty-one, Tishner Point. Uh, just a single state site plan approval for a proposed driveway realignment. Do you have Rocko?
Yeah, I need to share.
Have a good dead night, thank you.
Rocko, you, uh?
Well, I don't know, you could chip with Sean in the morning.
All right, it's Anthony.
And then also we have Dan Hackett, the landscape architect, attending as well on the same, uh, on the same computer.
Oh, it's Anthony?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's all right. So what we have in front of the board tonight is a driveway realignment for Tishner Point. Um, currently the driveway that is there accesses.
Excuse me one second, Anthony, who else is on with you?
I have Dan Hackett, the landscape architect for the project.
Yeah.
Did you get that, though? Dan Hackett, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then, is that it?
That is it, just Dan and I.
Okay, got it, thank you.
You're going in and out, Anthony.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
Highway realignment for the Tishner Point property. Um, currently the driveway services three to four different parcels. Um, what's in front of the board now is a, is an alignment to change the direction of the driveway. And then also with this realignment is removal of the existing tennis court that is on the northwest side. Uh, there's gonna be some landscaping down toward where the driveway opens up into the other houses that are currently there. And then it's just, it's grading and then just a realignment and then cleaning up of it, because the current driveway now is, is like a gravel asphalt, it's all the driveway. And this will create a new driveway that will be paved with some install. That's pretty much the project, is there any questions I can answer?
Yeah, knocking any buildings down, Anthony?
No.
Okay, I was, I was up in the air.
No, right now, this is, this is just an alignment, a realignment and a reworking of a, the current driveway that's there, there is no other. Work being done to the property at this time.
Anthony?
Yes.
Uh, this is Gary. The, the, the section, um, of the existing driveway where it wraps around, I guess, to the north to go in operating. It, it says on your drawings, you're gonna maintain that, but only for a little while, and then you're gonna get rid of it, so.
So the, the, the plan.
Why are you keeping that?
We're keeping it for construction access at some point in the future. And we're keeping it also for access to the existing cottages for the current owner to use the cottages. And then at some point, when we have a direction that we're going with the. A, a plan in the future, then we will reconnect and that driveway will be reconfigured, but the main driveways will stay there.
You're, I'm sorry, Anthony, I think, I think there was. Cause my understanding talking with the corn force now, so that, so the other reason for maintaining that, that those driveways is that because he's got structures on there.
Correct.
Fire apparatus access to those structures, so because they're not coming down yet, or there isn't a plane yet to remove them. That they have to remain, and the driveway has to remain to provide access until a future plan gets developed to remove them, at which point then they would be removed as part of that.
That, that is, that is correct.
Anthony, this is Bob, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hey, I went up to the site today and I saw where the markings were, where the driveway is going in. And I noticed where you're taking out that small maple, is that one that's small, it's like three inches in diameter, that's the one you mean?
There is a larger maple up there, but I'm gonna have Dan Hackett talk about. So here he is now.
So there's a real small maple, and then there's a dead. I don't know if it's match tree or black locust up by the road. The question is, are you gonna take down that dead tree? And also they showed about five apple trees alongside the tennis courts that aren't marked for removal. And it's also some evergreens that are also need to be removed, but are, are shown as being removed. Uh, on your planner, and also that the driveway is ten, it really should be twelve feet, that was my question.
Okay, when you enter the site, there is a dead walnut tree up top that will be removed. The, uh, and this is Dan Hackett talking to you. The four-inch maple tree, you are correct, will be removed. The, um. Like ten-foot high crab apple trees by the tennis court. Not all of them will be removed, there's like two to be removed. And the evergreens you're talking about is a boxwood hedge about four feet high. And that boxwood hedge is actually gonna get passed. And the reason being is we're working with the community, the neighborhood. Um, most specifically, Mr. Twombly. Um, we really wanted this to have a park field for the community. Uh, Mr. Twombly then worked with the other neighbors in the neighborhood to come up with the road alignment and the plan for what would be removed. So you are correct, the significance of those removals, particularly the crabs and the boxwood, um. We didn't feel we had to show them on the plan because it's not under the regulations of Canandagwa. If you wanted to see a modification of that and it showing on the plan, that'd be fine, uh, we're sorry we missed that.
That's a problem. Not the box, I was talking about the boxwood, but there's some evergreens down like Mr. Twombly driveway there, the circle on the, uh. Would you be the east side of the tennis court?
Those are hemlock trees, and those hemlock trees where the driveway swings to the north. Um, the objective right now is to work with Mr. Twombly, who I believe is on the Zoom tonight. And ideally it would be to save those because it does add to that park-like setting. Um, again, we will be within the roof zone of those trees, uh. We felt, you know, again, if we could save them, that's the idea. And I, I don't know if Mr. Twombly wants to respond to all that, but the idea would be to, to save what we can, those, those trees. Generally run further west of where the fencing is for the.
It's, I know. Yeah, can you talk to the ten-foot driveway or?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Uh, the plan show a ten-foot drive where I believe we should have a twelve-foot drive.
Yeah, yeah, I, um, I believe that came through on the, uh, engineering comments, and if. If the town feels that it needs to be moved to twelve. Um, there's really not a showstopper as far as with, uh, the client on this. Um, the reason we kept it at ten, the driveway now is really a nine foot. And one of the things that the community members felt was, we had one time showed it at twelve. And they felt very strongly that they wanted to keep it more narrow, to make it more feel like, you know, a country lane. At ten feet, the radius that was designed through Aaron Joyce is appropriate for fire truck access. But again, if were the approvals, the town feels it needs to be twelve, which that came from the town engineer. Um, obviously we wouldn't argue that point, and that's an important point. Where it next back down, oh, in front of Twombly's house, it would go back to the existing nine foot, which is there. And that was one of the catalysts for actually moving the driveway. Through the tennis court is the current road alignment, when it comes down. Where you hit the, uh, most southerly, souther, easterly turn. That radius is like a crazy radius, you just, you would never be able to get a fire truck in there, so that was kind of a catalyst to get to where we're going.
The site, the site design criteria requires it.
We're intersecting, consistent driveway with a toe-deep foot, that's pre-existing.
That's pre-existing.
I have a question. Anthony and Mr. Hackett, you mentioned the word, you're working with the community in two situations, but can you please define the scope of the community?
The Tishner Point residents that are part of the, uh, agreement. For that driveway and the maintenance of it.
You mentioned that you wanted it to have a park field?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, in a general sense, the board asked about the existing driveway going down to the homes. At this time, there is a, um. Very qualified team of architects and professional designers looking at this project. Um, I think at some point there will be a new home built. And I think that will be after all the concept designs are flushed out and all of that. The intention right now is that these homes are accessible. And the overall final site plan. Will be part of the presentation for what the final house would be. And, you know, again, I, I appreciate the board's question, we don't know exactly what it's gonna be. But to give the board some insight to it. Um, and I believe Mr. Bennett is on the Zoom tonight also. It's quite an exciting project, um, this project will be. A LEED certified, it's really for, uh. You know, this, this is going to be an energy efficient home, it's gonna be natively landscaped. Um, we haven't got there yet, and that is the direction we're going. The first phase of it is to get the driveway situated, which again, we discussed with the neighbors. And I think when the project comes into the board, they're gonna be pleasantly surprised with. Where this is going, it's, it's, it's gonna be a net zero home. Um, and I don't know how many of those have been done in Canandagwa, um. I'm sure there's a couple, but. Again, directionally, we can't, it, it would be. This ingenuous of us to tell the board exactly what we're doing because the final design isn't done. But the catalyst for moving the road and accessibility for all the homes. Was an important aspect when we spoke with the neighborhood that actually accesses this road, so that's where we're at tonight for the board, and that's. Really what we wanted to discuss for this evening with the board.
I think our location is really nice, and I think it's gonna provide a really nice entrance and exit from that home. And, uh, I support this project as presented.
Thank you.
So I guess the practicality, what we're doing here is we're abandoning an existing driveway. Uh, for the most part, uh, and, and the easement that's associated with, with what's being taken out. Creating a new driveway with a new easement. Uh, and I think that was in Lance's review, that to make sure that the easements were defined. Uh, meets and bounds were provided, and. Who, who has access regarding the, uh, who are the encumbers and. Providers for the easement provisions, is that correct?
A little guideline, a little advice would be to very clearly spell out in your easement. What the easement can be used for, and like chairman said, who can use it? But really what it can be used for. Um, is it a through access or is it an emergency access? Can people park on it? How does it have to be maintained? Who's gonna maintain it? And who's going to, how are you gonna share the expenses of maintaining it?
It just has to be more than a handshake easement, uh, one of these ones. A lot of times exist, uh, I know along the lake, uh, I think we're trying to get more definitive. Uh, tie down easements, uh, so that everybody understands, uh, who, who, uh, who has access to it and how it's being maintained.
If, if I could, uh, interrupt, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm no computer guru, so I can't see everybody who's up, but I believe that Rob Brenner. Who represents, uh, Mr. Bennett is on this. Um, WebEx or, uh, Zoom, I'm sorry. And Rob may be better qualified to answer all that, uh, he is the attorney. And I know that he has worked closely with the attorneys of the other residents to get to this, um, agreement. And those questions would better go to him because I'm not an attorney, I played one on TV once, but it didn't do well, that's why I'm a landscape architect, so.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, Rob Brenner, uh, counsel for the applicant, um, with the law firm Mahoney Brenner on Main Street in Canadagua. Uh, appreciate the, the feedback, uh, from the board and, and perhaps from the town attorney. Uh, we discussed, uh, modification to the nineteen ninety easement agreement at length, uh, with the neighboring property owners. Uh, there's three homes to the north that are benefited by the easement. Um, and we've worked through all of the, the items that were discussed, you know, who can use the easement, what can it be used for, who's responsible for maintenance? Uh, those are all spelled out in, I think, what the town would find a, a fairly robust instrument which was recorded. Uh, last month, and, and we're glad to furnish a copy to you.
Thank you.
And this is, um, this is Jeff Twombly, I'm not sure if it's my turn to talk or I'm about to speak a little.
You're up.
Okay, well, thank you, um, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, Doug and his team have kept us, um, involved throughout this process, has solicited our input. And, um, we and, uh, the other, um, homeowners on the point are fully in supportive of the project. Um, the one thing I did want to say was that, um, you know, the issue came up about the ten versus twelve feet, and we had a lot of discussion about that. And our feeling basically was that it didn't seem to make a lot of sense for us to have a street with a ten or a twelve-foot mandate suddenly necked down to a ten. Um, we, or, or nine, I mean, we would rather, you know, keep the character of the drive as it is. And what we really wanted to do, though, to, uh, make sure that there was adequate emergency, um, access and ingress was to. Um, keep it at the ten feet as proposed, but soften that curve that you're seeing such that it was more. Um, practical for any kind of emergency vehicles to enter and exit the property, so, you know, we, we think that's a, um, a good. Improvement over the current situation, um. And, and again, other than that, you know, I really just wanted to stress that, um, we have been involved and we're fully supportive of the project.
We need to wait that.
No, it's a site design criteria, that the driveways have to be crosswalk wide, so it's a requirement of the town.
There's plenty of work to be done.
There might be other work to be done, but.
Okay, uh. So, some of the third-party reviews that, uh, this application went to, uh. And we squared away with Sheppo, uh, I think, uh, it was. Was it sent to them for a adjudication or some sort of comment regarding the, uh, Sheppo?
It was.
Hello? Anthony?
The ship was applied for, waiting for response from the historical side. I'm waiting on the response.
Anthony, you might as well be in Siberia.
I said, the ship was applied for, we're waiting for a response.
Okay, waiting for a response, thank you.
Correct.
I have it, okay. Lance, you brought up the access easement as well of the driveway, and so we noted in your review. Uh, we got, uh, another review from the, uh. County planning board. Uh, this is not reported.
It's not.
Yeah, okay. Uh, county public works, uh, you may need a driveway permit, I think that's noted in the, uh, resolution, right? Correct, okay. Uh, how does the board feel about any additional lights even as there's some trees coming down? But also realizing that we're probably gonna be looking at a future application for a. Own in that property for the most part, you know, the week until. That comes in, or do you wanna have some, uh, trees replaced?
They show all those trees going in, like green, evergreens.
Yeah.
And that property, I could barely see the light through Mr. Tronby's side house, I could barely see the light, so it's not like short. Development issue there, and totally see that development.
Okay, so we did our due diligence from Shoreline Valleys. Okay, anything else, anybody else have?
Looking forward to seeing the project.
Yeah. Well, my concerns on the easement and, uh, and I guess the 12-foot wide driveway. And I hear those issues are addressed, I think you're good to go.
Yeah, so the 12-foot would be in my comment, but I did add the condition for your consideration, which is the cross-accesses easement over the driveway. This could be provided for the town attorney for review and approval, and it's to be filed once approved with the county clerk's office and the town clerk, with the library page added to the plans prior to signature. That's then for the town going forward. That's easily reported prior to signature.
It sounds like they did already report it.
That's fine, but then that's, we're just asking for that information to be provided, and then that library page will be shown.
And that easement should look like.
And if there's problems, we can.
All right, uh, anybody from the, anyone else in the audience like to, uh, address the board of this application? Hearing none, uh, let's move on to, uh, a couple motions here. We got an unlisted action on secret.
Your secret form is behind that level sheet. Until you guys are able to complete the part two and the part three, as part of the unlisted action that you've done. Why wasn't this part two? Because the driveway is not considered a residential development, so driveway is different. And driveway, it's not specifically identified in the, the secret rights. So it has to do with an unlisted action under secret requiring this review.
Okay, so I guess we're saying that, uh, for part two, it's, uh, no or small impact of any on all the items listed. Is there any objection to those? Regarding the driveway? And if we agree upon that, then, uh, part three would be as, uh, described.
Yes.
Okay, you're going good with that? All right, uh, then I will make a motion that we consider this an unlisted action for 4351 Tishner Point, the RLD zoning, and an application from, uh, that's the associates representing ABDB Summer Springs LLC. And, uh, we consider our, uh, part two and part three responses to the part one supplied by the applicant. Uh, do I have a second to that motion? Can I have a motion second, first discussion? Bob has a discussion. Okay, Bob, let's gather.
No, no, you have a second.
Uh, okay, I got a motion, a second from Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Let's move on to the single-stage site plan approval for the same act.
Hi, this is Gary. Uh, Gary, make a motion to approve the single-stage site plan for 4351 Tishner Point Drive, CP121-060 with seven, seven conditions. This is the resolution.
There you go, motion. Go ahead, second. I'll second that. And then I have a second from Bob. Any questions? For the record, what the seventh one?
The seventh one was, uh, the cross-access easement over the driveways, provided for the town attorney for review, and it's to be filed once approved with the county clerk's office and the town clerk, with the library page added to the plan prior to signatures. That's my understanding that the easement has already been filed, but we're asking for that to be provided and making sure the library page is on the plan.
Where are the conditions for the 12-foot present?
The 12-foot driveways and county engineers come.
Is the 12-foot driveway going to be something that is, we have to do? Are we allowed to do the?
It, it could be, the planning board wanted to waive that requirement. I believe the site design criteria allows for them to do that.
We, we would like them to waive that policy. With, if, if, if the planning board would allow that. We would, you would appreciate that.
Yeah, we discussed that, and because of the access with, for safety issues, we, we would like to give that 12 feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, you have, uh, any further questions, Bob? Okay, you're on, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you, uh, Dan, Anthony, Robert.
Thank you very much.
Twombly, goodbye.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, we are around the curve. We have a site plan application from, uh, the Hollander Design on our property that we have to cover and address on County Route 16. Uh, requesting a single-stage site plan approval to construct a field access and erosion controls for lots 1 through 4 and Route 16, field access to be chosen 14 feet wide, 600 feet long, with gravel and certainly approximately 1,500, 13,000. Your name and address.
I'm Scott the Hollander, the Hollander Design, uh, address is 7346 Dryer Road, Victor, New York. Prepared the plan. Um, I, I own all four lots, and, um, uh, we've had, uh, great difficulty accessing the site to conduct some preliminary, um, design work. So, uh, we decided to consult with the town about, um, constructing safe access. Uh, and this is the result of, uh, our proposal. Um, it's very consistent with access that was originally, uh, considered for the site, uh, when the four lots were created in, uh, 2004, I believe. Um, there is, um, a, a trigger that brings us here tonight, and that's, uh, some issues with the steep slopes, um, law. Uh, the area immediately, uh, to the north, um, I guess it would be the, the west of the, um, of County Road 16, that, there's a steep bank, roadside bank on the other side of the ditch. Um, and that area, uh, is in excess of 15% slopes, and the reason why we're here today. Um, the driveway access, the balance of, um, the way up, the, the, the slope is less than 15%. Um, and then once, uh, we get past the dog leg, uh, slopes are very moderate. And, um, our future plan, uh, is to build four homes here. And, uh, we will be, uh, so we will not be building on the steep slopes. We'll be in the, uh, non-regulated, uh, steep slope area, so less than 15% area. Uh, we had some comments from the town engineer, and, uh, we responded to those with a response letter this week. I think, uh, they're fairly, uh, technical and straightforward. We've complied with the requested additional information. The Ontario County Highway Department, uh, met with us on site, and, uh, we developed, uh, the drainage, uh, scheme that we've, uh, shown on this revised plan. Uh, and we have a verbal commitment from the Ontario County Highway Department, uh, to proceed with, uh, the required access permit.
Uh, give me a little history of this something. You said 2004 or some divided?
Hmm. Yeah, uh, and, um, it sat vacant, uh, with no improvements. Um, some of the thickest buck foreign I've encountered. Um, it still has some scratches, uh, and some scars. Uh, but, uh, we managed to, to, uh, do some mowing and, and clear that back a bit. And, um, obtained current topographical information, uh, in the area of the proposed driveway, and that's reflected here.
So is the driveway where the proposed road, uh, is this a temporary driveway?
No, thi- this will become, um, the, the same alignment for, uh, the access to the homes when they get built.
So this driveway will be replaced with a road?
Uh, not a road, uh, uh, help me with the correct technical term. A shared driveway, right? Yeah, we don't.
We have a laser, we want to search away and see what you're talking about.
Huh?
We do not, but that's a really good, do we have any, a laser?
I'm looking at a map, but I don't really understand what's going on.
If you want to go up and, or maybe deploy to the, you can leave the podium and get it boarded.
Sure, what specifically would you like me to highlight?
Well, I'd just like to see, I'd like to see with a four-millimeter bar.
Oh, sure.
Just, just to be clear, tonight, there is no, there's no application for any building lots?
I understand.
No, I just want to make sure the record shows it, because we've said it a lot of times, Lance. The, the, the application for us is for this driveway.
I understand.
No, perfect, thank you.
Four, this is lot. Rated 2004, this is lot one. County Route 16, West Lake Road. If I'm wrong. Lot two. Lot three. Lot four is the end of the council. And so driveway splits the property line.
Scott, do you know when those lots were approved, was the intent that had them, each had their own access to County Route 16?
I mean. No, the file, uh, plaque clearly shows driveway in this configuration.
Oh, okay.
We've slightly tweaked it to minimize the road slope. It's the, the, the original plan showed the driveway.
Everyone wanted to keep that.
Straddled the property line. Uh, but, uh, in our topographical survey, we found, uh, more conducive to, uh, rotate about 15 degrees about that property line. Resultant is a more reasonable degree.
And since it's in the steep, so it's a little, I think, I know that too. So, sort of, pretty clearly, it's somewhere like, I guess, maybe the original 2004 design too. Okay.
But what takes, no, but to that point though, like, I didn't know if this was a subdivision that was approved in 2004.
So, it's sorry, Ryan, it just dawned on me, you already have approval for this driveway? Yes? If it's a 2004 approval for this subdivision, can you just start with the driveway?
We, um, we, we can't.
Scott, was it a subdivision approval, or did it actually include the site plan elements as well? Or are we not quite sure?
I, I didn't do the work in 2004. Uh, I bought the project, uh, as it was, uh, less than a year ago. Um, the zoning, um, zoning officer's opinion was that I needed to come in for site plan, uh, for this driveway. So that's why we're here tonight.
Because if it was approved, there was no reason for us to re-improve it. If that driveway was shown on the plan approved.
I don't recall the 2004. Does anybody have it?
It's on Encore, if we can pull up Encore.
Four separate lots. It's the subdivision, right? They already are. We're going to put a driveway, a shared driveway. Yep.
Easement and, I'll write this down, agreement of maintenance and how to pay for it.
Yeah, we intend to file a CPS 7. CPS 7, yeah.
Involved?
No, they, he's providing a drainage swell and another.
Less than the.
Right, but it's under the threshold.
Keep it yours.
Right.
And because I think he's redoing enough. He's going to file a homeowners association and stuff like that, a minor homeowners association. I think it doesn't serve the applicant to stick with the original that much.
The driveway, when I first saw it, I'm sorry, am I off, off, no? I'm thinking. The driveway in the backside there, as it comes up, there's no need for setbacks from that driveway from the property line? So driveway to property line is 10 feet, but because this is a shared driveway with an easement, that would go away. That's my understanding. There would be some requirements to have a turnaround at the end, because we have to have fire, FRSO is in our common. And then the easement would be filed, but it sounds like they're going to, that, that, Scott, you're going to provide said language, and then ultimately it'll be.
I guess it's not going to be an easement. It's going to be commonly, it's not going to be a shared driveway, it's going to be a commonly owned driveway.
But right now, wouldn't we need an easement over right now, because there are four individual lots right now?
Thinking, Lance.
But then, and then at such time when it comes before us for a site plan approval, then that easement could go away, inch away, people would be in place.
Yeah, I've shown the geometry for the proposed easement on our.
Yeah.
There's a library and page on there?
Yep.
Oh, interesting.
But the, the driveway changed a little bit, right?
Right, it shows the, it doesn't show it going behind that. Yeah. Two, three, four.
I think, I think it does. I think that's a 30 feet, right? Or is that just a setback?
Yes, it does show it. Here it is.
That is a driveway 30 foot wide?
Oh, easement. I think that's an easement.
Easement, oh, we gotcha.
It's not a driveway, it doesn't show the driveway.
Right, okay. Show the need. That's my concerns there. Why, why would, and I'm, just for discussion, like, but why wouldn't, if the setbacks, the concept of setbacks is to, is to, to setback from, for both properties that are aligning? Right? So the setback from this property line would also be protecting the property or on the other side, right? As a buffer. So why would we not want to just have a 10-foot buffer? For the easement?
From what? A buffer for 10 foot from what?
Shared driveways that, that access is all the lot. Are you referring to a lot specific?
Yeah, I'm talking about all the lines, like, like if the driveway goes up to the property line.
The northern property line.
Yes.
Then, yeah, he has, we would have to maintain.
10 foot, okay, and that's all I was asking is, does that driveway?
Right.
Do that?
Yeah, it does.
I believe it's showing.
It exceeds 10 feet.
Yeah, that's all, that was my question for the right.
Not the, not the individual, I got you. You know what I'm saying? I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, if there is, we're following the setback. 100%.
Guys, before we get too much into the weeds here, uh, I think what Scott wants to do is you want to have some sort of access to get up to those lots.
Safe access, you know?
Driveway, uh, and you're thinking that I might as well follow for the most, most part, the alignment that was approved as part of the original subdivision, given some modification, I guess, down to, uh, was, uh, County Route 16, right? Those are the slopes. So what's he here for then, if he wants to construct a driveway with no other intent at this time of it didn't get up onto the property uh, to access mo and. So is that, is it a, is that a grading issue, I guess, right?
No, it's a warrant of site plan approval by the plant.
Yeah, it's a site plan.
So it's a site plan to construct this shared driveway, whether it's temporary or permanent.
Right.
It's a driveway that's being proposed now, with one, assuming the board is okay with the grading as proposed and the drainage as proposed.
Okay.
And the clearing as proposed. Once we get past all that, the next part would be, the, the one thing that would have to be identified is the easement, what you do identify on your class.
Scott, can you talk through the drainage, how you're going to drain to the, when I was down there today, there's this big culvert that goes underneath the street that looks like it takes all that runoff. So how can you ensure that that construction runoff is not going to get down?
Sure, um, is it okay if I go up to this, the screen?
This was also one of the concerns. So we looked at, uh, the project, um, and the entire watershed. Uh, and there are actually three separate watersheds that cross the site. There is a watershed that, um, comes down, um, primarily on lot one. There's another watershed that comes down on lot two, and there's a third one at the end of the site. Okay. Um, there are about 11 acres in size. They're not huge. And the steepest part of the watershed is actually by the road. So, um, there's a lot of sheet drainage that's going across the site. There is a lot of channelized flow. Um, so lot one, uh, we expect will continue in its current configuration. Currentage moves perpendicular to the counters, so you can see that that moving in that direction. Uh, our driveway is going to change that, uh, flow regime a bit, um, by channelizing along the edge of the other thing that we've done with our driveway section is it is crowned, it's sloped. And it's sloped pretty significantly at 3% cross slope, so the water is going to continue to come down as much as it's going to try and go toward the, uh, the roadside swell. Uh, the county was concerned about us bringing additional drainage to this eighteen inch culvert, because there's a, a channel on the. Uh, I guess, the, the east side of Wesley Broton. That has a capacity issue. So we configured our intercepting swell such that it misses that culvert. And will continue down the roadside swell to this culvert, which aligns with a pretty well-defined, low-capacity problem, uh, halfway to the lake. Um, so when we analyze this area right here, uh, its capacity doesn't change dynamics associated with the eighteen inch, and we're good to go. So, um, you can see that the, the, the swell actually continues here, but it's a very small catchment area associated with it. It's not a culvert anymore. We do have, uh, two culverts proposed, um. This is eighteen inch here, perfection. We'll protect here in one arc stream, that the one that I think the gate are already up. Uh, there is a black plate, I don't know if that's the right one or not, we'll make sure it's an eighteen inch. There is also one that was installed here, I believe in two thousand and four, we pointed out while. There's one of the culvert, um, that's up here, who provided some hydraulic sizing, and that is twelve inch.
Oh, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to require the thirty foot pavement off the road.
Nope, this is a county road, so the town paving requirement isn't.
And you have check dams coming down. Uh, either side of that driveway. You're, you're what, six percent from here? Uh, where the driveway meets CR sixteen, right?
So we did do some revisions here, um, the county would like to see a retro grade off the edge of pavement, so we actually. Uh, a negative slope of one point five percent down. Um, you know, just to prevent any drainage that may be coming down our driveway from continuing into County Route sixteen, this is a problem in a lot of other locations. It won't be a problem here, um, because you'll have that low spot that align with the channel segue. Um, steepest part of the driveway is right here, up the, the first hundred feet or so. Um, moderate, at least, about thirteen percent, that is unusual in this area, add those kind of slopes, and then ten percent to the top of the hill, which is manageable. We also added the over area up here, that's the shady area. Ten by fifty area, probably line. The expectation is that, you know, somebody's coming this way, it'd be a good line of sight to not go downhill until they've made it up the hill, right? We're not talking about a lot of traffic buying here, it'd be something that would be very, very. Twenty at the intersection. And then, uh, fourteen the rest of the way, and we widen another ten feet out here.
So you're hoping that this alignment will be the ultimate bed of the common driveway for all four lots?
Yes, absolutely, um, you know, we may have some additional comments as we bring, um, you know, individual lot site plans forward, um, and we'll make modifications to the. The width, the shoes, or. What we're, but, um, yeah, I think this, this configuration is important for us to kind of set the. The structure that we're gonna put these houses around right now, and start looking at floor plans and footprints that really complement the remaining developable area.
And it's gonna be gravel all the way through the terrace. So you, you're confident you can keep that gravel on that thirteen percent slope?
Yeah, yeah.
Roll it tight.
All right, uh. Comfortable maintaining the check dams?
Yeah, uh, one of the urgent, uh, elements that we're. We're, we're facing with is, we, we got about two weeks before we lose the ability to get, um, grass to grow, right? So we're anxious, we'd like to get this driveway in so that we can have it stabilized through the winter. Uh, and, uh, you know, have grass that, uh, isn't gonna continue to, that'll grow so that we don't have a sediment and migration and problems maintaining those, uh, check dams through the winter. For sure. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It, it, we're also proposing, um, that, uh, the invert of that channel in the steep slopes will be armored, so it'll have a rock bottom.
Right.
Okay, uh. No review from the planning board. Uh, I used to be, uh. They also asked for a, is he fit for the older development, some point, which we will see. Uh, Jim Butler, his comments, County Public Works, uh, you could talk to them, we'll need a permit for that, the driveway. You know, it would've been helpful, you, you have a location map on this?
We do, um, we, we do, actually, uh.
Well, it took me a while to figure out where we were. If you can put a location map.
Yeah, we can add it.
And Lance, uh, your review was. Fight the drainage. The driveway.
Correct, and we did receive, did receive response and revise plans, and did go through them and all the comments that.
All right, so this plan in front of us is, I believe, uh, was submitted, uh, this week, right, Scott? Once, I think it was twenty seven.
Yeah, we made revisions after we got the town engineer's comments.
You're, you're correct, I don't think, I don't believe the resolutions that were provided to you Friday currently reflect the latest plan revision date.
And this, this revision had to turn around and somebody had to give us. All right, anybody in, uh, TV land? Wanna speak? Sir, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, I do, uh, my name is Dave. Last name is Hudson, like the river, H U D S O N, if you're old enough, it's a Hudson automobile.
And you're wrong.
All right, the reason I'm here is I have no objection with developing the property. But I do have concerns about water. And I'll tell you why.
Where's your acta?
Forty-five, forty-seven. Highway Route sixteen, I am right in here. Downhill. We've had flooding in the past because this culvert here. Sorry. I need to leave. So this, this culvert right here currently is not like that, it's more like this. And it's an eighteen inch culvert.
Yep.
Been proposing a forty-four. Obviously, it's meant to bring a lot more water across on that side, and we do have a big ditch, the gentleman's correct. Big ditch here on the east side of County Route sixteen. We've had problems with that pass flooding. So I'm concerned about. The thousand feet of, thirty feet rather, of losing, we got reputation. And you probably won't hear of it, just for history. The old map you showed up here, the lots, a little different shape, and the driveway at that time was considered to go this way. Rather than go up. I don't know what difference that makes, really, one way or the other. Sure. Well, I've had a, you know, discussion continually with the county. About the ditch in, in my front lawn, it's in here. This is the one's the ditch, you know, and that's neither here nor there. But again, the problem is you get a lot of water. And if you start taking the vegetation away, and I don't know how this is gonna work, I mean, I'm sure. No one knows exactly how this is gonna work out in reality. How much water wound up coming down underneath the road? Into the ditch in front of my house, and then running down here, it's strange because there's. This runs along like this, and the gentleman's right, there's two or three other waterfalls that come down here, and they all go into the same spot. So I don't understand why the runoff of this property doesn't go into the west side of the road, because it down. Still coming over it, on my side.
Okay, well, thanks. I, I think, yeah, your concern was addressed by, uh, Mr. Dolander, uh, you said in your negotiations, discussions with the county, you're going to divert that water beyond that. Surcharge cross pipe, and you're kicking it down the next, right? You wanna just go over that again to Mr.?
Be happy to.
So, uh, can you see? No, I don't get it.
Good up there.
You can say anything, so.
I will, he's got a miss. Coincidentally, um, our, uh, our, uh, sign meeting was last Thursday. It was the same day that we had. An inch and a quarter rain. Um, and I have a couple of observations I can, I can share with the, with the, I shared with the county as well. But. I feel confident that our drainage will, um, not. Be a, a problem, uh, based on this. This theory, okay, so, uh, right now, you've got sheet flow coming down the hill. Uh, our swell will actually intercept that higher, so it'll take more water from the watershed that I, I highlighted first, if you recall, this one over to.
Yeah.
So it will miss the eighteen inch culvert. It will be north of the eighteen inch culvert, it'll travel down the roadside swell. Side of the, so on our side of the lake. And then.
It's not the longest to work it out.
Without, um. I think, actually, it hadn't, over, actually. So on the north side.
Okay, uh, do you want to say that, uh, Mr. Johnson? John, I think what, uh, Scott's saying, what the board has, uh, has realized, that it will divert the water from that, uh, undersized. Eighteen inch pipe to another pipe, so I think, and MRV, our, our engineering firm, will work with, uh, the applicant to make sure that happens, so. There'll be actually less water coming under the.
Yeah, okay, I, I was not aware of it being on the west side, because the last time I talked to the county, they were still going on down, on my side of the road.
So this, yeah, this plan, yeah, this plan shows a swell that would ultimately convey that runoff that was getting there before, further, what is it, north? North of that place, which then will hit a lower spot and run down to that other culvert. So I think we've got. Pulling some of that runoff that you're currently getting away from it, and it's not gonna go.
It wasn't, yeah, I used to wonder, like, why would the water come down on the west side and you move it under to the east side, that didn't make any sense to me.
Okay, so I think we've, uh, got that under control.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing to our attention. Uh, so anybody else have any other questions, uh, concerning this application? Uh, we heard from everybody. We're still lands in there, okay? So I think we're ready to move on if the board. Let's, uh, we have another unlisted action, Scott. Proceed. I'll, uh, make a motion that we consider this an unlisted action, subject to the. Part two and part three. Completed, voted for, and added to part one submitted by the applicant, does anybody have any? Objections before I formally make a motion to the part two and part three? Okay? I'm hearing any, I will, uh, refer that motion to consider this an unlisted action under secret, and the, except the part one and file part two and three of the short GA. Again. Okay, the only change would be the date of the revised plan. Okay, all favor? I, I. Mr. Carries, I have a motion requiring the. I mean, uh, see, I have a motion to, uh, approve a single state site plan. Well, yeah, two, one, that here at seven, one, County Route sixteen for the county, they go both, uh, for. E Hollingen?
The Hollinger.
Hollinger? Design Incorporated, it's in the thing that I like. Okay, you have a motion second, please?
Second, Gary.
Gary, you have a second, and you put in the discussion, you wanna go to the commission?
Sure, so the first one is, uh, you know, the, the, our standard condition, I've been signed within a hundred days. Second one is receiving the site development permit, uh, from the, the development office. The third one is the requirement regarding soil stabilization and road control, sure, the estimate to be provided as part of development. Fourth one is compliance with county engineers' letters prior to assigning the plan. Five is receivable of a permit from a fair kind of W regarding the driveway entrance and the work proposed within the right of way, that's to be required and provided to the county CEO. Six, uh, I believe Ryan, you had referenced check dams within the drainage swell to be maintained for two weeks. Two.
Perfect.
Two. Thank you. I was kidding there, it's cool. It's the math. And then the seventh one was, uh, you had the request of the location.
Thank you. Will you agree with the conditions?
Sounds good.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Mr. Carries.
Thank you.
See ya, good luck.
See you next week.
Yeah.
All right, gang. Thank you, Hudson, for coming up this evening.
Yes, that'd be interesting to see.
We'll be more happy later.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Something just better than.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from, uh, September fourteenth, John, you did a great job. You did nice job, uh, I have a motion second.
Second, Gary.
The referrals from the town board, there are none. Sean, you are, give us a brief rundown, a recap of the street planning. We have the other, uh, Wednesday. What came out?
Chairman, can I, uh, take off?
Take off? Sure, you're cleared to.
Thank you all.
I'll call you, I wanted, I wanted, I wanted to consult with you tonight on something, but I'll.
Give me a call, I'll be free all day.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks. Yes, Sean.
Yeah, so, um, I thought it was a great session we had, I actually commented that there were thirty. Thirty individuals became, um, I think every committee and every board was represented, that were represented in some way. And volunteers and staff, so, um, it was, what, about two hours?
Yeah.
Um, we were able to, uh, take the fifty-one priority action steps from the, from the comp plan and narrow them down to five, five? I top priority action steps for twenty twenty-two. And you're gonna ask me off the top of my head.
I got it, I'm working it.
You got it, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna do.
Yeah. You have them in your email?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
First was encourage continued agriculture use and viable farmland and discourage development of those parcels. By directing developers to more appropriate locations within the town, such as the three identified growth nodes. Number two, permanently protect lands of natural resource significance and support recreation on protected lands. Number three, promote housing and development growth within identified growth nodes and discourage development in environmentally sensitive areas. Revise ordinances as needed to achieve this goal. Number four, support the development of affordable housing options and affordable transportation options for the local workforce. Number five, invest in construction of roads, sidewalks, and bike lanes.
Yes.
They're the, they're the five priorities.
Yeah.
Wonderful priorities.
They were fantastic, and, I mean, we were hopeful that someone rise to the top, and they did, and they're very, very interrelated, so.
But Sean, even though you're pretty new here in this position. These are themes that are pretty consistent in our comp through the last several years, right? Ten, twenty years?
They are.
And I, I asked that question, I said, what is our method, that they just hold us to those, and what is it so next year that we got accomplished and didn't get accomplished, and why didn't we accomplish those goals?
Yeah, it's just, it's really consistent, the themes from this town and the leadership in this town are very consistent, year after year after year.
and the leadership in this town are very consistent year after year after year. And so I I didn't, I wasn't able to go into ten, but I feel like those would have been the metrics regardless of who attended. So I appreciate the leadership of the town.
The thing I learned on that, that was there, is that those are the goals that we can accomplish so that we want to be able to accomplish in one year.
One year.
One year. So that was a big
You know, honestly, I love it in that it gives us some mission statement. That's, it's going to be our cornerstone, our guide. So we don't flounder around in twenty twenty two. So, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, it was great.
Still ready, town board? The board did pass the form based code?
They did.
Oh, good.
And candidate for crossings. Yeah, P B A was all on board.
They got their, they got their variants.
They got their variants.
And I'm reviewing their plans. I just provided them a couple.
I saw that, I did, I saw that you emailed.
It was very minor, so I'm gonna call them to go over it actually, because I know they're each in them before.
They are, they are.
Okay, so we didn't want anything to develop.
We dropped the annual report to
Training, there's a couple new training sessions. Name on the board, one of the farmlands. An email of nine twenty regarding farmland training, the New York Farming Federation Black River webinars, which are all good ones. So check that out. That was in an email also. And that brings us to the annual report.
We are going to be doing a training for boards here via Zoom, most likely. On lots of things, seeker the form based code. Where can you find what you're looking for as a new planning member? Wow, it's idea. It's fantastic. It's overwhelming, the number of documents we have. Where do I look as a new board member?
I have another one. It's like that guy tonight. Business owner didn't know that he had to do that. I Google it on our website, on our town code. Businessman or business in our town, when you need, they come up for anything. So then this may be some better communication tools.
Well, that's actually one of the, in the comp plan. Transparency and where do people go?
We should have been here like seven years ago. Before that bitch came here. Remember those days? Oh, my God. But it's getting better, but you're right, Bob. But it, but it is getting better. Like I, I think I have challenging times sometimes going to our code and trying to find the code.
I've been in to try to make that first, do nothing. It goes to nothing. It goes to the nether.
Yeah.
I think Canada Day was one of the best websites that I've been to very long time. There's some invisibilities that do not.
There's Gates County. I I don't even know how many don't have, you can't find anything.
Honestly, I use, I use Canada Day as a reference tool for a lot of communities in terms of what, how your applications look, how the website looks, accessibility. I think, I do think Canada Day does a pretty good job of recognizing.
John, strike that out. I didn't mean to say that.
Our annual report. Has every one of them had a chance to look it over? I think the additions included a reference to the to Amanda, they asked for Amanda, is that what cover what you were?
That is verbatim.
And the five G. Maybe you, maybe you're referencing, I think you said in your email you sent out about how five G will affect land use.
Right, which, which I'm not really sure. So I need
And how to be employed responsibly. There.
Would that change? Would you be okay with moving this forward?
Sure.
I make a motion to Yeah.
Okay, so I will have it on. I'll send it to the board for their October meeting.
Okay, thank you very much for occurring this. There's no credits. So I have a motion. All second. Motion second, all favor of sending this on to the board? Okay, off it goes. All right. October twelve. We did get new plans in from
Chris, this is early.
Canada Day group.
Yeah, I was just looking at them.
No, you get papers. It's a lot of things.
Oh, you're passing that out.
You're welcome. Oh, goodness. You guys too.
Love this coloring picker, Dan. Yes.
All right, Lance, what has to happen? I know we can't talk much about it after the time.
Yeah, you give a quick overview.
Please.
So on October twelfth, because of the changes to the plans, the planning board will be taking action, assuming you guys are ready to take action to re-coordinate the seeker out to the involved identified, P U C identified, involved in interest agencies. It's not so much, we will have to do it to ask for their permission to be the agency again, because you've already done them. This doesn't require any new agencies to be coordinated with, but we are going to solicit comments back from due to the changes because they're fairly significant changes to the plans. We're going to solicit comments back from them over a period of time. So on the twelfth, assuming the board's ready to do so, assuming that all items that the town has requested, not only the plans, but there's a number of reports. There's a number of other things that were asked for them to provide, assuming that all that information has been provided. Then October twelfth, I will have a summary sheet because I won't be here. I apologize. I'll be on vacation, but Greg will be. And I'm gonna provide Sean and the town a quick summary of what it is that you guys are going to be asked to do and why. And then ultimately, it'll just be your standard intent resolution to re-coordinate out with the involved interested agencies. Assuming you guys do that, then M R B will forward out the packages again, like we did before, with a date of responses to come back to us, which will be sometime in November, and then we will go from there. Does that make sense?
We're basically starting over.
Basically starting over. I mean, your public hearing is still going on. You still have an active application. This is a modification to that application, but due to the modification and the significance of the changes, we're obligated to resend it back out to those agencies that we've already identified and get comments from them. So that when we get to that part of doing our seeker, you guys have some additional information, if any was provided, to help you get through that process.
I'm sort of at October twelfth meeting. I will not be in person, but I will try to attend. And I'll send any comments before I'm in.
So no Amanda and no Lance.
My question is for the chairperson. So at this next meeting, will we have a public, the public hearing? Will that be open to the public again? And will we?
We've just tried to kind of, you guys have continued the public hearing to October twelfth. So because you've done that, the public would have the right to come in and have this conversation now. Okay, whether or not you guys want to have a conversation on these revised plans to that, that's up to you guys, but the the goal of that meeting isn't for any real action to take place other than re-coordinate back out. Okay?
I would see us opening, reopening the public hearing. Letting Brennan do a presentation of the revised plans. Getting any comments from the board who would be here. And then we do this seeker assembly of thirty day thing. So we certainly wouldn't be taking any action in the plan. But we would be doing the seeker presentation.
There's a number of reports and items. And when I say number, I'm gonna say like twenty to thirty different things that were discussed with the applicant to provide as part of this resubmitment. Most of them were plan related changes, but there's reports and different things, one of which was to potentially fly a balloon on the area to give us an idea of the visual. I did just, I, as part of this, we did have a planning board meeting last night for the town, hoping this application was on the agenda. They continued theirs until next month with the understanding that revised plans were going to be resubmitted and I wanted them to consider them before they made their determination on their project. They're still wavering between the the connection of the road. But right now, I think their, their biggest concern is one, making sure that the traffic study is adequate. That was provided and two, making sure that all feedback related to the new plans is provided to them for their, for their review.
And they just got single family home.
Correct. I think they're, they're getting more comfortable with the idea of going through, well, the only thing that they could do, in my opinion, would be a plumber approval when the time came. Because there's contingencies that they would have to occur, i.e. the sanitary connection, which requires county approval. So there's still a number of things that have to happen. I'm not trying to speak on every half, but that would be the only thing I think that could occur for their side for the time being. Assuming that everything else was addressed.
These changes had no effect on her.
According to Brennan, I haven't had a chance to go through them, but that was one concern why they held it up too, because they wanted to make sure it didn't impact them. But according to Brennan, last night, during a dialogue, it was identified that there were no changes. I don't anticipate that these would impact that.
Well, I'll be looking for a conservation analysis and the train lands to find, you know, putting in the book.
I think there is one. Well, at least it told us.
This is impressive. I appreciate this, Sean, being able to do this. I know that a lot of the materials I was on my but I do like the side alone. Take his notes and just circle and highlight them. So thank you for that.
Okay, well, I think we said that this requires enough scrutiny. We need eyes on. All right, so that's the twelfth. Everybody gonna be here for that, will you? Congratulations to Sharon. Sean.
Sean.
Sean, Sharon, Shannon. Sean is the new
Oh, yeah.
Town representative to the Ontario County plan.
Oh, what a good idea. Excellent.
I'm so excited.
Good.
Well, I, I mean, I ask because I'm a town player, but I also am a town manager.
You can be our pipeline.
Yeah.
If I can on that. Mr. David Lake, who represented us for many years. You know, he passed away and we're throwing some really serious shoes. And he was a really dedicated public servant to this town and I can't think of anyone more qualified to represent us. So thanks a lot.
Anybody else have anything for the board?
Do we have a sexual harassment transition?
You have Sean, Sharon, Sharon.
Shayna.
Hi. I don't know when the next one is. I, I remember tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It's
Oh, tomorrow is the evening one.
Oh.
Yes.
The rest of?
Yep.
All right, uh, you wanna do your thing?
Well, I think most of it, it took us to eight twenty four. Hi.
Hi.